Once we open, we will do a pledge of allegiance and appoint the deputy moderator, and then proceed right to the articles. But just to go over some of our sort of protocol here, the meeting is being videotaped and recorded and projected over cable. So you're live television?
No, no, excuse me, we're not live.
Oh, we're not live yet? Okay, this is just preliminary. So we will be live once we open. This is...
No, 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 we won't be going live today from here.
Okay. Okay, we're not live, but we're taping the meeting. Okay, we have the selectmen are here, and the finance committee, you know, Wayne Miller, Don Klein, Veronica Kell, a town administrator, Jim Kreidler is our town council, Adam Costa, Steve Sheldon on the finance committee, Geraldine Bazikas, Andrea Wood, and Donna Lynn Pinkerton, chairman of the finance committee. Also to my left, your right, is the town clerk, Kathy Sparford, and I'm John Barrett, the town moderator. So if you, you know, we're basically conducting the meeting on the, based on the parliamentary procedures found in the Town Meeting Time book and our own traditions, basically. If you want to speak on a motion, raise your hand. It's a little bit dark under the tent, but I think I can see you, but wave and call Mr. Moderator if I don't see you. Once you're recognized, you have to approach the microphone. We only have the one microphone. I'd suggest that people leave their masks on, just to protect the next person that's speaking into the mic. Let's see, and direct all your comments to me as the chair of the meeting. All motions must be in writing, so if there's an amendment to a motion, you need to write it out and bring it to the clerk. If a matter's finally voted, it may be reconsidered upon a majority vote if the motion is made this evening, or at least by this evening. No, I mean, but before we conclude this meeting this morning, if the meeting goes to a second night, God forbid, a meeting, an article which is voted on may be reconsidered by only a nine-tenths vote. If a vote tally is questioned, if I announce a vote that I think passes the two-thirds vote, and you don't think I'm right, then if seven people rise to challenge that, we'll do a count. I'm not going to point counters at this time, because I'm being very optimistic and hoping that we won't need to do it. If we do need to do it, I'll appoint counters at that time. If you're confused about anything, just, you can stand or raise your hand and call for a point of order. If you find that something is not working right, you can't hear, and you want to raise a point of privilege, you can raise a point of privilege, and you can interrupt the speaker. As everyone, I think, knows, if a motion to move the question is made, that cuts off debate if that motion is approved. You have to be recognized first, you can't move the question and cut off debate, you have to be recognized and then move the question. All right, I guess we got the visitors over here, so we know they're there, and just, I think, well, hopefully we've moved through this fairly quickly. I know this is a kind of an unusual situation, certainly it's been an unusual year, but in some respects, I think it's kind of nice. You know, there's a nice setup. I have to congratulate the selectmen and the facilities maintenance.
Just called Steve.
And the senior center for all their assistance in setting this up, and anyone else whose name I've missed.
We're at 74. Steve's on as well.
Okay, all right. Either your phone or friend worked, or people are making their way here, so. We're at 74, we've got one more to go. You do the return of the warrant of the annual first, and then... Right, right, I think. Funny, I forgot. Gene, I know, I don't have it written, no, just, just go on autopilot. Okay. 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 All right. Thank you, and at this time, I will ask the scouts to come forward from Troop 10. Let's see, there's Liam Congdon, Rowan Congdon, and Colin Sinon, Sinon, signing, going to lead us into the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, scouts. Round of applause for the scouts, please. Okay, first matter, I guess, is the reading of the warrant, return of the warrant. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Townsend by posting up attested copies of the same at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street at the center, West Townsend Reading Room, 264 Dudley Road in West Townsend, the police station, 70 Brookline Road, Harbor Fire Station, 41 Main Street, and Harbor Church, 80 Main Street, at least seven days before the date of the meeting, as within directed. Constable of Townsend, Michelle Dold.
Thank you, Ms. Sparford. Procedural, a housekeeping matter for us is the appointment of a deputy moderator, and I would move for the appointment of Gene Rahala as deputy moderator, and ask that you vote that by acclamation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. All right, Gene, you're appointed, wherever you are. Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting until after the conclusion of the special town meeting. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn to the special town meeting?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the annual is adjourned until the conclusion of the special, and I'll ask the town clerk for a reading of the warrant for the special town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Townsend by posting up attested copies of the same at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street at the center, West Townsend Reading Room, 264 Dudley Road in West Townsend, police station, 70 Brookline Road, Harbor Fire Station, 41 Main Street, and Harbor Church, 80 Main Street, at least 14 days before the date of the meeting, as within directed. Constable of Townsend, Michelle Dold.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe then we can, we can get going with the special town meeting warrant. Can't find it here. Yes, okay, Article 1, and I'm going to dispense with the mask now. Article 1, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, the sum to be inserted for the purpose of paying prior fiscal year bills, or take any action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Miller?
I move that the town take no action on this article.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay. All those, any debate, anything to be said? Not hearing any, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $126,331 for the purpose of offsetting fiscal year 19 snow and ice deficits under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Klein?
I may, I move that the town vote to transfer from stabilization the sum of $126,331 for the purpose of offsetting the FY '20 snow and ice deficit under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there anything to be said? Yes, sir, if you could, come forward and identify yourself at the mic.
Joe Shaka, Maplewood Drive. Just a quick question, what's the difference between stabilization and free cash?
The question comes on the motion. Mr. Kreidler?
Mr. Moderator. Is my mic on?
Okay.
I think so. Ms. Moderator, through you to Mr. Shaka. Originally, and normally, we would pay the snow and ice deficit out of free cash, but because we are in, technically, in a new fiscal year, we're not able to use free cash for that purpose. So we just learned that from DOR this past week after the warrant was posted, that's why it said free cash. So instead, we have to use our other reserve, stabilization. The expectation is that the next town meeting, you'll see an article to replenish stabilization by an equal dollar amount, just to keep it the way we usually do.
Thanks.
Okay, comments come on the motion, anything else to be said? Not seeing any, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to close out the Building Inspection and Revolving Fund in the sum of $56,575.69, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Kell?
I move that the town vote to close out the Building Inspection and Revolving Fund in the sum of $56,575.69.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anything to be said? All right, not seeing any, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer from Water Enterprise retained earnings the sum of $2,000 for match to a Massachusetts Municipal Vulnerability Planning Assistance Action Grant to assess climate impacts on the town's wells, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
I don't see the water commissioners here, so I'll read it, Jim.
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Miller?
I move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise retaining earnings the sum of $2,000 for a match to a Massachusetts Municipal Vulnerability Planning Assistance Action Grant to assess climate impacts on town wells.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any hands, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article, motion on Article 4, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer and appropriate and/or borrow and appropriate a sum of $132,939.52 for a climate resilient water supply assessment contingent on the award of a grant, of grant funding to reimburse 75% of the cost. The town will apply for a State of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EEA, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, MVP, action grant to reimburse 75% of this appropriation. The town will provide an in-kind match in the amount of $34,249.24, or 25% of the total cost, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
I move the town vote to borrow and appropriate a sum of $132,939.52 for a climate resilient water supply assessment contingent on the award of a grant funding to reimburse 75% of the cost. The town will apply to the state, for the State of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Action Grant to reimburse 75% of this appropriation. The town will provide an in-kind match in the amount of $34,249.24, or 25% of the total cost.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Kell?
I just wanted to note that in, when you came in, you should have picked up a handout, the Climate Resilience Water Supply Assessment for the town of Townsend, Massachusetts. The town has been working on the MVP Preparedness Plan, which was submitted in June of 2020, and with that plan, we have the ability to apply for an action grant, and assessing both the private and the public water supplies for climate resilience was one of the high priority items. So this is a reimbursement grant that the town would, if it is awarded, the town would put the money out in front, and we would get 75% back at the completion of the work, which would be at the end of the upcoming fiscal year. And 25% of the match is in-kind, both from the Water Department, nonprofits, including the Nashua River Watershed, and the Townsend Conservation Land Trust, and the staff and board members in town. So that's what this is. So if you, you know, if you read the handout, that gives you an idea of what's going to be accomplished through this process.
Thank you, Ms. Kell. Thank you for the comments. Is there any other comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any, I think we're prepared to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 5, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $450,000 from the PEG, or PEG Access Receipt Reserve account, for the purpose of funding the production and broadcast of public, educational, and government PEG access television. Said funds to be distributed under the authority and direction of the Board of Selectmen as it deems appropriate, and pursuant to an agreement between the town and its designee PEG Access Corporation, Townsend Community Access, and Meteor, Inc., or take any action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Maure.
Mr. Klein?
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $425,000 from the PEG Access Receipt Reserve account for the purpose of funding the production and the broadcast of public, educational, and government PEG access television. Said funds to be distributed under the authority and direction of the Board of Selectmen as it deems appropriate, and pursuant to an agreement between the town and its designee PEG Access Corporation, Townsend Community Access, and Meteor, Inc.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or questions on the motion? Not seeing any, I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 6, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, unanimous. And that, I believe, concludes the special town meeting. Is there a motion to dissolve the special town meeting?
I, can I make that motion?
You can.
I move that we dissolve the special town meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to dissolve the special town meeting. Anything to be said? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Special town meeting's dissolved. And that brings us back to the annual town meeting, including the budget. And I'll just point out, there is, in the large packet, there is a condensed budget and also an itemized line budget. We'll get to that further when we get to it. Okay, Article 1, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint all town officers unless other provisions are made by Massachusetts General Law, by town charter, or by vote of the town, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
I, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint all town officers unless other provisions are made by Massachusetts General Law, by town charter, or by vote of the town.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 2, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, as most recently amended, to, 1, establish the following revolving funds for fiscal year 2021 specifying the departmental receipts to be credited to each fund, the departmental purpose or programs for which each fund may be expended, and the entity authorized to expend each fund fiscal year spending limits, such bylaw to provide as follows. And you'll see in the warrant, the list, I'm not going to read all of them with your permission, and I will let, who is it, Mr. Miller?
Yep.
Mr. Miller, to make the motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, as most recently amended, to, 1, establish the following revolving funds for fiscal year 2021 specifying the departmental receipts to be credited to each fund, the departmental purposes of programs for which each fund may be expended, and the entity authorized to expend each fund fiscal year spending limits, such bylaw to provide as follows, and if you will allow me to say as printed.
I think if you could just read the, yeah, the recycling, what the category is and the amount.
Sure, okay. Recycling and solid waste, $20,000. Recreation programs, $52,000. Facilities maintenance, $4,000. Cemetery, $28,000. Fire alarm, $4,000. Animal care program, $1,000. Fire EMS, $5,000. Police, $80,000. Conservation, $20,000. And fire EMS, $10,000.
All is printed in the warrant. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded on Article 2. Any discussion? Mr. Shaka?
Again, just a quick question, what happens to that $80,000 if there are no classes in high school this year?
Question comes on the motion regarding the school resource officer.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Shaka. If there is a school resource officer, whether or not there is a school year, traditional school year, these funds will be used. We anticipate that even if there isn't a traditional school year, even in a hybrid, we still will need to have a school resource officer, and there'll be interaction, not just in the school, for the time that they're there, but out in the community as well. So only in the case that there wasn't going to be a school resource officer would we not need these funds.
Questions, comments come on the motion, anything else to be said? Okay, Pierce, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 2, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds in the treasury, such sums as be necessary to defray the charges and expenses of the town for fiscal year 2021 pursuant to a detailed budget totaling $23,665,776, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Klein?
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds in the treasury the following. Funds, Title V, MWPAT, purpose, to supplement the MWPAT debt repayment for $27,538. West Townsend Reading Room, supplement funding to operate the West Townsend Reading Room for $2,900. Ambulance Reserve, Ambulance Receipt Reserve, supplement funding of the operation of the EMS department, $475,000. Recreation Receipts, supplement funding to operate recreation, $30,000. Water Enterprise Fund, supplement funding to cover water overhead, $262,181.80. PEG Access, supplement funding to cover cable access of $25,000. Such sums that may be necessary to defray these charges and the expenses of the town for fiscal year 2021 pursuant to a detailed budget as follows. General Government, $1,433,980. Public Safety, $3,386,494.
36.
I'm sorry, $3,336,494. Education, $13,985,684.
A, don't, did I say 13,000? 13 million?
13, excuse me, 13,985,684.
Right.
Streets and highways, $731,219.
17.
17, sorry, I got, solid waste, $729,900. Human Services, $465,638. Culture and Recreation, $446,211. Debt Services, $462,605. And a grand total of $23,665,766.
Second.
Motion, motion's been made and seconded. Now, as is our practice, what we generally do with the budget is go through it by categories, so we can take some time to look over general government. If there are any questions on general government, you can raise it then, and then we'll, if there are any amendments to that item, we'll take those up then, and then vote on the general government section. Then we'll move on to the next one, and then the final vote on the entire budget. So, any questions on general government? And the, there's the condensed budget in the next few pages after Article 3, and then there is a more expansive, detailed budget after that. So, any questions on general government? Give a few minutes. Any comments from finance or the selectmen on this category? I note that the finance committee wasn't able to prepare a report for the meeting. Is there any general comments, Lynn, that you want to make to the finance committee, or?
Because of the COVID-19 and the restraints, we weren't able to go through the budget as usual, so we haven't made any comments on it.
Okay, well, if, as general citizens, you have any questions, comments, feel free. All right, okay, Mr. Shaka?
Why is there a $20,000 difference in the Board of Selectmen budget from what was approved and what the town administrator recommended?
Question comes on the motion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you. Which number specifically are you looking at, Mr. Shaka?
Fifteen.
There was a position funded last year for a part-time human resource consultant that was never filled, and as was the case with a lot of the creation of this budget, if we had positions that weren't currently filled and we needed to come into balance, the decision of the select board moving forward was to not fill those positions until we can get a better sense of our finances in the fall, once the state passes a budget.
Okay.
Question comes on the motion on general government. Any other questions? Think, that not being any, I think we can omit a vote and just vote on the total, right? Does anybody object to that? Unless, unless there's an amendment to the category, and then we'll vote on that, I'll move along, just so we can, you know, make some time here. Yeah, Ms.
Laura Schiffern.
Laura, yeah.
Does that help?
Yes, that helps.
Okay. Just a question regarding the cable taxes of $25,000. That's a change from what's printed here, so is that an amendment to what was noticed for the warrant?
Question comes on the motion on the cable access, the PEG, the $25,000. Right, it isn't in the printed, but it is in the motion, right? Right, right.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreider.
Thank you. Through you to Ms. Schiffern's question. When the warrant was originally posted, the peg access was, actually, in an earlier version of the warrant, peg access was going to be all done outside of the budget. So we had an article in the special town meeting to transfer the remaining funds in the peg access to the private corporation, the new peg access corporation. What we realized, however, is they're not going to be up and running for a couple of months. That would have left our cable access operator, Hartley, without a home and without a budget to cover his salary and benefits. So we had to make an amendment. We added peg access back into the budget, so when you look in the MIS section of the budget, there is a $25,000 number there to carry him, and we had to then add the corresponding revenue back into that first chart.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, and I wouldn't want Hartley not to have a home, for sure. He's too valuable to us. I would ask then, is there any place else in this budget where that occurred again?
Question comes on the motion. Mr. Kreider.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. No, there is, everything that has been moved, including what was moved with peg access and $25,000 that did not appear in the warrant, everything that has been moved is as is. So everything has been reflected accurately.
Comments come on the discussion on general government. Anything else? Okay, I think we can go on to public safety. Any questions on public safety? All right, has everyone had enough time? Let me put it this way. Does anybody need any more time? Apparently not, so we appear to be ready to vote on public safety for a total of $3, I'm sorry, we're good on this one. We don't have to vote. Right, okay. Education, proposed budget of $13,985,684. Any questions, comments? Okay. You don't see any questions? Anyone need more time? Mr. Shaka.
This is actually not budget-related, but it's part of it. Has the superintendent relayed any plans for what they're going to do for the schools since we're spending about 60% of our budget on the school district? Do we have any plans going forward?
I think he just came in over there.
He is here.
The superintendent, here?
Yes.
Okay, the superintendent care to reply to that comment? Question.
Mr. Moderator. Before he gets here.
Yeah, Mr. Kreider.
He has been sending out a regular email notification with updates on every incremental change the state government has made, because he's hamstrung in terms of what the local plan can be until they tell us what they're going to authorize. So while he was walking up, I just wanted to thank him for the fact that he has been keeping us very well informed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kreider. Okay, the superintendent of North Middlesex Regional School, Brad Morgan.
Can I take this off when I speak? Keep it on.
Is that okay?
I keep it on, that's fine.
When people are using different ones, we're trying to keep them.
That's fine, absolutely. So, good morning, everyone. As far as the budget goes, we are planning on releasing a three-tiered plan to the school committee on August 3rd, and that plan has been sent out to the community. It basically has an in-person model where we would get all of our kids back for at least a portion of the day, following the physical distancing guidelines, and then we have a hybrid model where kids would follow some type of a rotation in two groups, both in and remote. And then the third model is a remote model. We're going to begin negotiating with the, with the local MTA, our teachers' union, on Monday, and we hope to make some good progress then, but at this point in time, it looks as though every single district is going to have to submit their own plan and do it individually, rather than statewide. But our three plans were released and an executive summary, I believe, on Wednesday of this week.
Comments come on the question raised under education. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any other questions? Person there in the back, if you could come forward.
Just curious why.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
Lisa Lewandt, Wyman Road.
Lewandt, yeah, okay, Lisa.
Just curious as to why, under the expenses, there's a almost $600,000 difference between what's recommended and, I mean, and approved.
All right, comments. Question comes on the education article, and, let's see, does anybody have the finger on what page that's on? Sixty-five? Okay, page sixty-five.
Mr. Moderator.
See, okay, Mr. Kreider.
Pulling up the document now, so just bear with me. Did you say page twenty-five?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, I apologize.
In the line item budget.
Sixty-five in the line item budget, okay.
Yeah, never mind.
Never mind.
Too early on Saturday.
Could have something to do with the temperature, too, Lisa. Okay. Any other questions? Yep, over here. Mr. Catigan, I believe.
You're right.
Adams Road.
Bill Catigan, 35 Adams Road. I just have a general question on education. A lot of, well, we used to measure the dollars per pupil spent and rank the town in terms of all the districts in the state. Is there any current information on that figure?
As far as what our current per pupil expenditure is?
Right, per pupil expenditure.
Sure, so, so our, our current per pupil expenditure is just under $17,000, which is, you know, it's certainly something that we're constantly looking at. I would say that the school committee has been kept informed that we are looking at having a study done on not just the property, but, but how the, how the district is set up to see if there is any way that we can bring that number down a little bit, because it seems as though every year, our budget's increasing by right, right in the neighborhood of around 3%, but that 3%, the great majority of that, right around 90% of that, is tied to the cost of transportation, which generally, every year, we only get one bid on busing. It's also tied to contracts, so are the multiple collective bargaining agreements in the district, and then we have the health insurance costs. So that 3% annual increase is essentially right around 2.75, 2.85, is generally made up of those three components, and we're always looking, we're going to continue to look at ways, beginning especially this year, at our per pupil costs, to see if we can possibly bring that number down a little bit, so that we can start having some money to put towards curriculum initiatives and professional development for staff. So the per pupil costs will be addressed this year, and I'm going to be recommending, the school committee's aware of it, also at the August 3rd meeting, that we bring in the Collins Center, which will be a grant-funded study of the district, so we'll be, at this point in time, fully funded by a grant, and one of the things we'll be addressing is that per pupil expenditure.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Comments come on the motion. Anything else to be said? Ma'am?
Sheldon Chapman, 302 Main Street. I'd also like to hear from the superintendent from Neshoba Tech in regard to the question directed to the North Middlesex superintendent.
All right, I don't know, is the superintendent from Neshoba here? Yes. If you want to come up here, you can, or?
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm Denise Pigeon, the superintendent from Neshoba Tech. As Superintendent Morgan has suggested, we are all, superintendents statewide are all in exactly the same place right now. We have all been asked by the Department of Education to develop three models of a reopening plan, the first model being in-person learning, the second model being a hybrid approach, and the third model being a remote learning approach. At Neshoba Tech, we're working on all three models. We, in our hybrid model, will obviously be prioritizing onsite opportunities for technical education, which we know is much more difficult to replicate in a, in a remote fashion, and our timeline is very similar to Mr. Morgan's, and we have been communicating with our student population. Thank you. Our current cost per student for the town of Townsend is $11,929, or just about $12,000.
Thank you. Comments come on the questions. Anything else to be said? Mrs. Gabrielska. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. I, I recognized you before, I didn't see the gentleman.
I have a mask.
Okay.
I know that our school system is already doing really well on this subject, but I know a lot of alums are concerned about diversity, training, and I didn't know what kind of the budget would be set aside for that in light of what's going on around the country.
Question comes on the education part of the budget. Mr. Morgan, you care to handle that?
So the district already has, I have assembled an equity advisory that I'm working very closely with, made up of staff at all three levels, so we have elementary, middle, and high school, and it is going to be chaired by a person at each level. The committee itself, I believe, is 16 members in size. We are fully committed to make sure that there is training around equity in the district. We are going to look at our mission statement and also our district strategic plan, which is a five-year plan, but really look at the social-emotional piece, and we intend to tie in the equity training to that. As far as a budget goes, there is no budget at this point in time, because quite frankly, we don't really have a budget. Even though the budget has passed in two of the three towns, we do not have a final budget from Governor Baker. So it's very, again, I think it's an unknown. We certainly intend on putting money into that, if we possibly can, and into that type of training, but we don't know what we have for money, and because we don't know which model we'll be going back into, and what type of federal or state funding we'll be receiving for PPEs and things of that nature, and whether or not it will cover it, we're just unsure on what the actual number is, but we are committed to it. I will say that the equity advisory, we did meet last week, and we're not really looking at, just to be clear, we're not looking at a curriculum, so to speak. We want to make equity training a part of everything that we do. We want it to be just a part of our education, not a specific subject, so to speak, but a part of who we are as a school district. And again, I think a lot of that is going to be going back to our mission statement and then establishing core values.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I don't know.
At Neshoba Tech, we're taking a very similar approach. We are also going to be having our staff participate in the professional development that will be coming forward from the Department of Education. We also have a very strong professional development budget built into every one of our annual budgets, and we're making this topic a focus for this year.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Maire.
Mr. Sheldon.
So just in case, and I looked at the plan that was sent out, and one of it is, obviously could be homeschooling, how is that going to affect the busing with money that's been budgeted for busing? And, second question, I noticed on the busing plan, if there is school, it's going to be one child per seat, and in some cases, that may, may need multiple routes to pick up the same. Is that going to increase the cost of busing?
So something, again, I don't have a clear answer on the increased cost of busing, but it does appear as though that each school district is going to have some level of responsibility for PPEs on buses for students that do not have PPEs, but also, there appears to be a responsibility on the school district to clean the buses after each run, which is something that could be very costly. To mitigate that, the district has purchased five electrostatic backpack blowers for the buses, so that they can be quickly disinfected after each bus run, but as far as whether or not the cost will change, again, each model brings its own level of challenges, so I'm not entirely sure, again, until we get a final budget from the state. And quite honestly, the state is changing on, on how they're handling this. They initially told us that they would mandate a model statewide, and that we would have to defend why we couldn't do that if that was the case. So if they mandated in person, North Middlesex would, would in essence have to say, this is why we can't do it, and it would have to be approved by the state. That changed this week, when the commissioner came out and said that each district is essentially welcome to negotiate its own plan on how to move forward. Unfortunately, we only have about five weeks now until the start of school, and all of this has quickly changed, and I know that, again, Superintendent Pigeon is in the same situation. So costs certainly are up in the air at this point. We're not, we do have each principal working on bus runs. We also got legal advice to make sure that as a regional district, regional districts are mandated to provide free transportation for all students, so we have to provide a seat for every student on the bus. But something we are doing this year, and we're hopeful that it will lead to some savings, is that we did survey parents and ask, do you intend on taking the bus ever? Because we do have a lot of parents that drive their, drive their children to school, and the legal advice we received was that we could, in fact, plan on the students that were planning on taking the bus, not the students that weren't. So we're hoping that that has a positive impact on the bus, but also the fact that we have to remain flexible, and that a parent could change their mind at any time, and that seat would have to be provided. So again, I think it's up in the air, depending upon the model, if it's remote, there may, there would certainly be some savings in transportation, but the law says that you are not to pay for a contracted service, and Governor, for a contracted service that is not delivered. Governor Baker changed that, and then, in fact, recommended that districts pay for the service regardless. So our school district ended up paying 50% of the transportation costs from mid-March through the end of the school year to cover bus leases and things of that nature, so that we have buses for the fall if we need them. But moving forward, if, if we go remote, and other districts go remote, and busing is not, is not used, that law would have is not, is not used, that law would have to be looked at again. And I'm assuming we would take guidance from the state again on that piece. Does that make sense?
So regardless, we're paying on a contract if it's not used for busing, if we, if we go completely remote, based on the law that the governor, based on what the governor stated this past week or past month?
So the governor made the recommendation, I want to say, in mid-May, that the districts, in fact, pay for bus, pay for busing, pay for food service, even though it was not a contracted service that was not being delivered. And that's a change in the general law. So that's going to be, I think, up to him on what his recommendation is. And then, again, he didn't, he didn't force districts to do it. He highly recommended it. So I think on some level, he would have to make a decision on that and give us some guidance.
Thank you.
Comments come on the education part of the budget? Anything else? Think we're ready to pass on to the next section? Thank you, everyone, for that discussion. Streets and highways, proposed budget of $731,000. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Two hundred, and Ms. Pigeon, thank you. I'm sorry. Streets and highways, $731,217. Any questions on streets and highways?
Hi. Jones Savoy Adams Road. Please, are we going to be voting again on getting more money for paving our roads?
Okay. A question comes on the streets and highways portion of the budget. Any comments? Mr. Kreidler?
Mr. Moderator, through you to Ms. Savoy. The proposal that went forward last year went to the ballot after, and after town meetings approval, and it failed at the ballot. So the debt exclusion portion, which would have raised multiple millions of dollars, does not exist. The remaining pieces of the bylaw that passed at town meeting last year contemplated Chapter 90 funds, which are state funds that are designated to each community for road work, being put into the pavement management plan. An amount of money from excise tax each year, $50,000, until that amount reached a total of $250,000. And the budget that's before you this year does not contemplate putting that, what would have been $100,000, towards that roadway pavement management plan. $50,000 that had been approved last year would have been increased by $50,000 this year. That $100,000 is not accounted for, for the pavement management plan this year. A decision was made in creating the budget this year specifically because we find ourselves in the precarious position of being a month into the fiscal year and not yet having a state budget, which provides for a large portion of our revenue, to really even have a sense for what our overall financial picture is. So in trying to make ends meet for this interim budget, which is really what this is, the decision was made to not move forward with that funding of the $100,000 at this point. It may be that in the fall, when we come back to a town meeting, or early winter, when we come back after the state passes its budget, and we have a more clear perspective of what the financial plan looks like for the town, that'll be reconsidered. But as of right now, we had to come to balance. We know that we have a reduction in revenue. We were told to reduce what had been originally planned for state aid. So in trying to account for those reductions, that was one place that the decision was made.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kreidler. Ms. Kell?
I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this question from up here or down there now that I'm on the Board of Selectmen.
You can ask it from where you are.
Okay. So my question is then, Mr. Kreidler, where in the budget is the line item that we could fill in if, in fact, we are able to do that in the fall? And the second, the third piece of that bylaw, and the first was the Chapter 90 funds, the second was the excise, and the third was $250,000 from free cash. So where is that accounted for in here? I know that last year it was in, under the capital fund in the budget last year. So where, I guess, where are the zeros here that could be filled in if, in case, we come up with money in the fall?
Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to Ms. Kell. It does not live in the operating budget. So if you, in your packet of information that you see, which is far more detailed when you're creating the budget, there is a revenue projection page and an overall budget summary page in that several hundred-page Excel spreadsheet. There is a cell that says pavement management, and you may recall that I had it highlighted in bright red in each of the versions that you received to draw your attention to the fact that there would normally have been a figure there. Last year, that cell had $50,000. This year would have had $100,000. So it doesn't appear as a budgeted item in the operating budget. It is an amount of money that is carried outside of the budget from available revenues. So we would normally have an appropriation outside of the operating budget to do pavement management. It still hasn't been determined by the state what we would call that, that fund, but it would be outside of the budget. So you won't see a zero in this budget. You will see a zero, however, on your revenue projection sheet and summary page. I could pull it up on my laptop here if it was something you'd want to see to refresh your recollection.
No, I just guess, in the fall, when numbers become final, how do we bring that back if, in fact, we can? How do the people know where this is?
Certainly. I think the fact that we're discussing it today puts it on the radar screen. I know it was discussed at Finance and discussed at the Select Board meeting. So there has been a public discussion on the matter. If, when we get to the fall, we have revenue sufficient to balance a budget that meets your expectations as a Board of Selectmen, and funds left over after that budget, operating budget is balanced sufficient to then start plugging other areas, and you determine as a board that one of those areas should be that $100,000 for the pavement management plan, then you would direct that.
Okay. So it's our responsibility?
Absolutely. The entire creation of the fiscal plan for the town is your responsibility to prepare and ultimately town meetings to adopt.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments come on the streets and highways. And Ms. Schifrin?
Yes, Laura Schifrin, 28 Barker Hill Road. I wonder if you could help us out here? When you're discussing a line item like streets and highways, can you refer us to the page we should be looking at, that line items, that budget?
Right. So, thank you, Ms. Schifrin. In the detailed line item budget, it would be page 67 for streets and highways. I'll try to. I don't have it facility with finding it myself right now, but I'll try to do that. Maybe next, next year, we can put the page numbers in the, in the motion so people know where to refer. That'd be handy.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So we're on streets and highways. It's on page 67 in the printout of the detailed, detailed budget. By the way, can people out in the woods hear us? Okay, great. Normally, you'd be in the balcony, I take it. Any other questions on streets and highways? And looks like we're good. So if you'll turn to page 70, you'll find the next section on solid waste, which is proposed to the budget of $729,900. Anything to be said on solid waste? Okay. Looks like everybody wants to adopt this budget. All those, no, we're not voting. Okay, going on to human services. Which is page 71. I think it starts with cemetery and parks. Anything to be said on Okay, looks like we're good. Culture and Recreation is on page... 77, thank you. Yeah, Culture and Recreation, page 77. Anything to be said on culture and recreation? Not seeing any. I think we can move on to debt service. Any questions on the debt And I'm sorry, debt service is on page 81. No, I'm sorry, page 80. 80, 81, I guess. Yeah, the total, the total for debt service is on page 81. $462,605. One question? All right. Come, step up, Mr. Catigan.
Bill Catigan, 35 Adams Road. On the debt service issue, right now, we have historically unbelievable interest rates. And I just wondered, have we got any projects going to renegotiate some of the debt down to the current interest rates, or are we locked into bonds that we can't do anything about? Thank you.
Question comes on debt service. Any, Mr. Kreidler?
Mr. Moderator, I would defer to the town treasurer, collector, who's, I believe, seated behind you. I believe that we are locked into long-term bonds, but if there's any wiggle room at all, perhaps you'd be able to address it.
Yeah, we were able to renegotiate for the rates for some short-term debts, which renew every year, and we got very good rates for one of our bands, for the water, for the water department. And we also got new debt for the highway that we got at a very good rate. We did not look at the renegotiating of bonds yet, but that might be something that we'll be looking into this fall.
Okay. Comments come on the motion? Thank you. Mr. Shaka? Oh, hold on, Laurie. I saw Joe for, well, he's deferred to you.
Yeah.
Ms. Schifrin?
We go back. Okay. Just on the, on the page 81, where you identify long-term debt, is it possible in the department or somewhere to write just what that debt was for? I mean, they're all identified the same way with different amounts. Is there a way that we could have that, know what it was for and when it was established?
Sure, certainly. Mr. Moderator, through you.
Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Ms. Schifrin's question. Yes, we do have a debt schedule
Thank you.
that shows in far greater detail the origination of each note, the purpose for the note, the interest rate, the annual payments in both principal and interest, whether it is excluded as having been a debt exclusion vote, or whether it's borrowed entirely with inside the operating budget, and the life expectancy of the note. So you'd be able to look at it graphically even and see when debt drops off. So you, you basically plan your capital planning around those types of functions. So we do have that debt sheet, and we can make that an attachment at the, at future town meetings if you think that'd
Okay. Comments come on the question? Mr. Shaka?
Yes, to the town treasurer again. Are the, are the, is the debt that we issued callable?
Can you repeat that?
Is the debt that we issued callable?
Okay. Is the debt issued callable?
Yes, we are able to renegotiate the rates.
No, that's not what I asked. I asked if you can call the bonds, pay them off early, refinance the debt with new bonds at lower interest rates.
Yes, that's possible.
Okay. Have we looked into that?
We will, we will be looking into that. Unfortunately, the environment of COVID-19 also meant that most of the banks were not as readily available. And also, the town was closed for a short period of time, so we just didn't have, we didn't have time to look into that. But that's one of the projects that I'll be taking on possibly this fall.
Okay. Comments come on the motion?
Thank you.
Okay. Think we have any further discussion on debt service? Think we're good. I'm sort of lost in my place here. Okay. Next one is insurances. $2,074,047. Any question on Okay. There don't appear to be any. So I think we can vote on the grand total, which The motion is before you. Any other questions on the total budget? And let's see, one hand up there. Ma'am, come forward.
Mary Jane O'Hara, 7 Worcester Road. I think, I think it was the highway department that I missed. I was wondering if there's any way that the sidewalks could be fixed on Main Street around the school, you know, near the school that goes to the center?
Okay. Question comes on the motion. Question about the sidewalks being fixed. I think it's more of a comment about something that we'd like to see done, but it doesn't really relate to the budget unless you have a specific thing. I don't know if the superintendent is here, if Mr. Smith wants to comment, but...
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, or Mr. Kreidler?
Just, it's not a budgetary issue, but because the question's been raised, I think a few years before I arrived in town, so it's been probably close to seven years, the, the town voted to appropriate funds to do design for sidewalks from, originally, my understanding is from the center of town all the way to the school. That's been shrunken based on the economics of that plan to look at going from the center of town and making things good to the harbor. So some of that engineering funding exists. Some work has been done. And there is a grant opportunity that's just been released over the last, I think, couple of weeks or a month or so, that might be an opportunity for us to revisit that project. So it's not part of the operating budget, but it is something that this town has looked at in the past, just hasn't had funding sufficient to do, but might be able to revisit with this new grant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kreidler. Ms. Kell?
Another thing on that is, so if we can get it into the grant that we're currently looking at, that would be great. But another option is the, I'm going to put a plug in for this, the Safe Routes to School program, which is a federal program that is administered through the state. It, it requires the schools to sign on and there to be a community committee on it. But the schools, if they, you know, if kids are walking to school or biking to school, it looks at that, and there are programs that the schools put in place. And implementing that would then allow us to apply for additional grant funding a year out for things like sidewalks and crosswalks and things like that. So that's another possibility. Because I agree, the sidewalks do need care in town. So...
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kell.
Jones Savoy Adams Road. Does the town have a grant writer?
Question comes on the general budget on, is there a grant writer in town? And Mr. Kreidler?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Through you to Ms. Savoy's question. No, the town actually attempted to fund a position, a part-time position, two years ago now. And with the amount of money that we're able to put out for a part-time position, we weren't able to attract anybody that had the experience to do the job. What has happened by default is departments are writing their own grants. So you have, for instance, the MVP grant. Members of the planning board and Beth Faxon, our planning assistant, has done, have done. They have done a wonderful job on the MVP grant. Beth and I are working together on the Spaces Grant that's currently available for us to pursue, and we address... pursue, and we addressed that at the last selectmen's meeting, which is available on Zoom on the website if you'd like to watch. So we're, we're really working on a staff-by-staff level, depending on the subject matter expertise of that given staff person. I know the highway superintendent is here, and he's, he's done some grant work out of his office for some of the bridge work that's happening. So the bridge down on West Meadow Road, for instance, he had a hand in putting that grant together. It'd be wonderful if we had a dedicated grant writer, but I'm really proud of the work that staff on your behalf has done writing it as they can.
Thank you, Mr. Kreidler. Ms. Savoy?
Thank you. I believe that we would get more efficiency from having a seasoned grant writer, because I do know our staff is very overworked. So I am wondering if, when, how we could visit getting an appropriate salary or an attractive salary so we could get a good grant writer in town, please.
Okay, comments come on the motion? Mr. Miller?
That, that is a discussion, if you watched the meeting we had last week, that is something that we're going to be looking at, maybe combining a couple of positions for the next budget 2.0, if you will. So it is something that we'll address in the interim.
Comments come on the general budget? Mrs. Gustafson?
Yes. Carol Gustafson, 9 Brookline Street. It's a minor question, but it has to do with the highway line painting. There's a zero budget for that. A little concerned about crosswalks and the safety with no lines.
Mr. Moderator?
Comments come on the motion? Mr. Kreidler?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Ms. Gustafson. The, that was a line item that didn't traditionally exist. It was something that was done, I believe, without pulling it up, it was just a year that you probably see a number in there. That line work still is done from the general highway operating budget and Chapter 90 funds, so that doesn't mean that we're not going to be having the line work done. It's just it was a, I think, an ill-fated attempt to try to carve something specific out that we don't need to do.
All right, so crosswalks will be painted?
They will, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, comments come on the motion? It's Gabrelka. I'm sorry, it's Mr. Gabrelka first.
Since we're on the general government, I just don't know if it would be possible to move the money that's been allotted for a clothing allowance for the Conservation Commission to their professional services. I know they've had a lot of, a lot of coming and going of staff, so I don't know what the $1,200 is a year for clothing for the Conservation Commission, and I thought...
Leslie, with all due respect, I know we try to deal with each budget. If someone wants to make a motion, certainly I'll entertain it to amend that budget, but I think we're mindful of the temperature rising here, and we don't want to take too much time over $1,200. But if you want to make a motion, we'll entertain it.
Like now?
Huh?
Now?
Yes.
Mr. Moderator, just as a point of information before she does, we have a union contract obligation for that clothing allowance. So even though the positions aren't currently filled, if they were to become filled during the fiscal year, we have an obligation under the union contract to provide a clothing allowance at $600 per slot. So that $1,200 is a legal obligation that we have.
Okay, never mind.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gabrelka. Mr. Kreidler, thank you. All right, yes, sir.
Chad Sexton Duranian, 8 South Street. I kind of want to be, give a little information on something. Being on both the planning board and on the Towns and Housing Authority, the board members are the ones that are actively seeking and writing these grants that we were talking about. It would be nice if we did have a grant writer in town, but I will say that it's not the staff. The staff is helping us, but is volunteers, which we truly, truly need for all of our boards and committees in town.
Thank you. A good point. We do, this town really does operate on volunteers, so if anyone is interested in volunteering for any boards, I know there, I think there are a few vacancies, please consider it. And now I think we're ready to vote on the budget. Does anybody want me to repeat the number? No, okay. So it is before you. All, the motion's already been made and seconded to adopt this budget. It has not been amended. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? The ayes have it, unanimous. All right, that brings us to Article 4. To see if the town will vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended and as appropriated in this warrant or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Kell?
I move that the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended and as appropriated in this warrant.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded? Any discussion? Not seeing any? Think we're ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Unanimous. Article 5. See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $1,229,338.59 from the Water Enterprise Fund revenues to operate the water department for fiscal year 2021, and in order to fund the cost of intermunicipal expenses, that $262,180.72 of this sum be appropriated in the general fund or take any other action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Miller?
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,229,338.59 from Water Enterprise Fund revenues to operate the water department for fiscal year 2021, and in order to fund the cost of intermunicipal expenses, that $262,180.72 is of this sum to be appropriated in the general fund.
Motion's made and seconded. Anything to be said? Not seeing any? I think we can vote. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings the sum of $100,000 to pay down a bond anticipation note, BAN, for the Main Street Water Main Replacement Project or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Miller?
I move the town vote to transfer from the Water Enterprise Fund retaining, retained earnings the sum of $100,000 to pay down a bond anticipation note for the Main Street Water Main Replacement Project.
Motion's made and seconded? All those, any discussion? Don't want to rush you. I do want to rush you, but...
Please do.
Doesn't appear to be any debate here, so all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? The ayes have it, unanimous. Article 7. Okay, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just, Article 7 is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from available funds in the treasury. The sum or sums is detailed on the following chart. For the purpose of funding, the FY '21 capital plan is voted by the Capital Planning Committee as detailed below in the chart which you see in the warrant. And is there a motion?
I didn't bring my capital plan.
Is that Mr. Klein?
Do you have a minute?
Sure, all right, we need a minute. I think there's water out in the back. If anybody wants to grab a water bottle, right? Is that right, Kathy?
And some up here, too.
And there's some up here? Anybody need water? Is everybody keeping cool enough out there? I know, it looks like some, some people are sun worshippers, they are out in the sun. Nothing like natural air conditioning. Oh, oh. Oh, all right. Well, I don't know. Thank you, I appreciate that. If I do, I'm used to wearing a, I used to wear a Minuteman outfit, so this isn't too bad. If I pass out, though, you can remove the jacket. And thank you all, you've been doing a great job at this meeting under certainly unusual circumstances. So Deputy Moderator Rahala, have you heard any new jokes lately? Oh, no, not about the legal profession. Don't go there, Gene. Anyone else, anyone else hear any good jokes lately? Oh, Mr. Miller has, well, it's not appropriate for town meeting. Don't worry, folks, it looks like the weather forecast, we're going to have some cloud cover by noon, so we'll get some relief then. And I agree, we better. We will, don't worry. How many more articles do we have? We're on seven, I think, right? Three, so we'll breeze through it pretty quickly once we... Are you all set? Okay, Mr. Klein, thank you. Okay.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Oh, Laura.
Laura Schiffern. Before you start, and we had that break, I just wanted to ask if there were any veterans here, and if they are, we would like to thank them for our service, and also to our police officers and our police department, that we do back the blue. Thank you.
Okay, all right. I think, take that as a resolution from the floor. Thank you, Ms. Schiffern. All right, we're ready to go forward on Article 7?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
To move that the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum or sums as detailed on the following chart for the purpose of funding the FY '21 capital plan as voted by the Capital Planning Committee as detailed below. Cemetery and Parks, a 4,500 Dodge Dump Truck, two-wheel drive, $40,000, coming from free cash, $10,000 from the cemetery account. Fire EMS, ALS, equipment replacement, cardiac monitor, EZIO, petty, et cetera, for $63,450 coming from the ambulance reserve receipt account. Fire EMS, replacement of ambulance two, first payment on a three-year lease of $103,160, money to be coming from the ambulance reserve receipt account. Fire Police, a joint fire police radio upgrade replacement, microwave link for Pepperell RECC Tower Project, $110,000 from the capital stabilization fund, and for the wreck tower, $65,000 coming from the capital stabilization fund. Police, vehicle lease, police cruiser third payments, $59,655. That is in the operating budget tax levy. Water Department, Witches Brook Station, $75,000, water retained earnings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. You'll note that there are some items that are on the printed warrant that were not in as part of the motion. I presume that those are items that were deleted?
Yes.
Right, so, okay. Any, okay, yes, Ms. Savoy?
First, I want to say thank you to the Chair of the Planning Board. He is right, our volunteers are very valuable, and thank you to everyone who does volunteer for the town. Please, so I know the cross, we don't have a lot of wells, they're all shallow. We have, Cross Street Wells been offline for at least two years, I think. Is there anyone from the water department here?
I don't believe there is.
So I question what the Witches Brook Station, what's going on there, please?
Does anyone have any information on that? Mr. Klein or Mr. Kreidler?
I would defer to the water commissioners.
Or perhaps Capital Planning? Anyone here from Capital Planning familiar with that request?
Yeah, I think the cleaning of the water tank or some such thing. They have words, they're official words that I don't know.
Comments come, that is, involve the cleaning of the water tanks at the Witches Brook Station?
I believe so.
I think it was an update to the, if I remember correctly, it was an update to the physical part of the tank that needed to be cleaned. I don't know if it was exactly cleaning, but I think that's the word that is used, if I remember correctly.
All right, some, some information there. I don't know if folks heard that, but it does have to do with the Witches Brook Station, something to do with cleaning of the facilities for that station, so. Chet?
Chad Sexton Duranian, 8 South Street. Can we get an accurate total on that, please?
Oh, yes, a new update. Does anyone have the math done on that, striking those articles that were not read?
Okay, I have a number if someone wants to compare with me. I have $531,265. Does that match you, Jim?
I'm not there yet.
$531,265.
Yep.
So you got?
Do a couple of cross-checks here for those of us who are not facile with mathematics.
You agree with me, right?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, it's $531,265.
Okay, the grand total with the deletions is $531,265.
And, Mr. Moderator?
Uh, Ms. Kell?
Can I just say that the Capital Planning will meet again between now and the next special town meeting, and some of these things may be coming back at that point.
Okay, comments come on the article? All right, are we ready to vote? Appears we are. All those in favor of the motion on Article 7, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 8. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into one or more net metering credit purchase agreements with the owner, owners of solar photovoltaic facilities for periods of up to 20 years, and take any action and execute any other documents and ancillary agreements necessary, convenient or appropriate, to accomplish the foregoing, and to implement and administer such net metering credit purchase agreements, all of which agreements and documents shall be on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deem to be in the best interest of the town, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Uh, Mr. Miller.
I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into one or more net metering credit purchase agreements with the owner, owners of solar photovoltaic facilities for periods of up to 20 years, and to take any actions and execute any other documents, ancillary agreements necessary, convenient or appropriate, to accomplish the foregoing, and to implement and administer such net metering credit purchase agreements, all of which agreements and documents shall be on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deem to be the best interest of the town.
Motion's made and seconded. On Article 8, anything to be said? No, I don't, no, I do see a hand, sir.
Dennis Argo, 68 Meadow Road, two questions, one is the article doesn't state that it's the Lockbrook Solar, should it say that?
It does not say that, I think it is generally, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's to authorize the Selectmen to negotiate agreements with any entity, is that correct? Mr. Kreidler.
Ms. Moderator, through you, to the gentleman's question, it's left open. A point was brought up recently that there is another solar facility in town, and we weren't able to answer conclusively whether all of their net metering credits are accounted for, it's believed that they are. Having just spoken with council, it was drafted this way to provide an opportunity to negotiate with any that might exist. The expectation is, I think you're correct, Lockbrook Solar is the, is the one that's most likely to be considered.
All right, my next question is, given that the Lockbrook Solar is 80% inside the 100-year flood zone, are there any other solar farms that we can negotiate with? I know you just mentioned the one, are there others outside of town?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, yes, Mr. Kreidler.
Thank you, through you, to the gentleman's question. We spent some time at the last Selectmen's meeting, and the one before that, quite honestly, talking about this issue, and we're a little bit at a disadvantage in the Town of Townsend for solar net metering credits, because the state program limits the availability of solar net metering credits to a community based on the distribution system or company that is their provider. So unlike Lemonster that might have all of National Grid to be able to pick and choose from, we are limited to just the four communities that Unitil provides service for. So, my understanding right now is looking at the Unitil website, and confirming it with the Department of Energy Resources website, that Unitil has a waiting list for net metering projects that are in queue if the state changes the law and requires or allows more facilities to be built. But right now, what we've got in the Unitil District is all we're going to have unless and until that law changes. So, if there's an availability on Route 13, that'd be something we can consider. If not, we'd be looking at Lockbrook.
My last question is, how does this fit into the general master plan for town's energy?
Comments come on the question regarding the master plan?
Certainly, well, are you speaking of the, the town's energy committee and their plan?
Don't we have a master plan? And part of the master plan is energy, how the town deals with its energy and services. So how does, how does buying a, or going into a 20-year no-escape contract with a solar farm fit into the master plan when it comes respect to our town's energy?
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kreidler, yeah.
I don't know that the existing master plan, and somebody from the planning board that, that has the data could, could provide it. Is it at least, does it go back to '01 or '06?
'02.
'02, so the existing master plan, I, I'm not certain that there's a section that contemplated that. If somebody is conversant with that document and can speak to it, I think that'd be helpful, but I know we do have, we do have an energy committee in town that is, has been tasked with looking out for the town's energy needs, and the comment coming back from the energy committee was in support of anything that could reduce the costs of energy for the community. I don't know if there's anybody from the energy committee in attendance here today.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Kreidler, I was former, I was part of the master plan committee, it's not complete yet. I don't believe they've met in some time, but that, it was part of the, the piece there. And to your comment about entering into a contract with no outs, we haven't negotiated anything, we haven't even discussed it, so that would be part of the discussion in negotiation of said contract. So, you know, there's nothing on the table that you're voting for a contract today, that, that I would, just want to make that very clear.
Okay.
This just allows us to negotiate a contract of longer than three years, if that's correct, Mr. Kreidler.
With, with respect to the master plan, should we pause on these contracts and wait until we have a master plan?
Again, sir, the, I think the, the article before you is just to authorize the Selectmen to be able to negotiate contracts, there's no contract right now, as I understand it, is, is there?
Yeah, but I'm concerned about the slippery slope here.
Mr. Moderator.
Okay, Mr. Kreidler.
Through you, to the gentleman's concern, I mean, there is a draft of a net metering credit agreement that has been in the public domain for the better part of six months, seven months, I believe, it goes back to the January special town meeting. This article appeared at that town meeting and was moved to be passed over.
No.
I stand to be corrected by Selectwoman Kel.
Well, okay, thank you, Mr. Kreidler, I did recognize some hands up back there. Is it?
It wasn't.
Lisa.
So how, how does?
Lisa Lewan?
Lisa Lewan, 3 Wammen Road, how does Nexamp, when the paper says lock something, who, how is that, what is that relationship?
Ms. Moderator.
Mr. Kreidler.
My understanding of the document and the legal structure is that Nexamp was the developer of the solar field, and as is practice in the industry, they create special purpose entities, special limited liability companies that are the asset at each location after they've developed it. So Nexamp was the developer, but the ultimate asset is called Lockbrook Solar.
Okay, so who's the owner? Is it still Nexamp?
I don't know the underlying corporate structure and how they divvy up the shares of the asset, I, I don't know that.
I'm just concerned because this is almost verbatim with Nexamp in Winchendon, is there a financial interest or, or some disclosure that we should have known that you pre, have a previous relationship with them?
Ms. Moderator.
Ms. Lewan?
I'd like to address it if I may, because this is the second time that she's taken these shots.
It's a good question, sorry.
No, it's not.
Okay, order please, Mr. Kreidler.
I'd love to address Ms. Lewan's continued expression of concern. For those that don't know what, what Ms. Lewan is speaking to, I have provided consultancy services in my private time for solar companies, never Nexamp. And I have filed disclosures as I'm required to under the ethics laws in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with the Town of Townsend, which are public documents, and they are available for anybody to see. To be clear, I have no financial interest in Nexamp, the fact that Nexamp developed a solar farm in the Town of Winchendon where five years ago I served as the town manager, I had no financial interest and had no involvement in their development of their facility in Winchendon, I have no involvement with the development of their facility here in the Town of Townsend. Quite frankly, I continue to be offended by the suggestion that you make that there's something untoward afoot, and I wish you would stop, I'm publicly asking you to stop.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kreidler, all right, in the interest of full disclosure, I, since this is generally straight into the issue of Nexamp, other than just the general motion about giving the Selectmen authority, I do want to disclose the fact that I have represented Nexamp. I do represent Nexamp, I don't represent them on this article, but I'm going to ask Mr. Rahala to come forward to further entertain any discussion on this article. Yep, thanks, Jean.
Good morning. Yes, ma'am. Would you please identify yourself and your address, then?
Jennifer Pettit, Highland Street. I guess my main, one of my main concerns about this is that if we approve this here, does that mean that we are not locked into 20 years? Because it seems to me that energies are changing, and technology is changing so fast that we may be shooting ourselves in the foot. And number two is the flood plain, I think I would be much more comfortable with entertaining five years, 10 years, but 20 years seems an awfully long time to me.
Mr. Moderator.
I'd like to make this observation as moderator, that this is not a motion considering a specific contract at this time. It's asking for authority for the Select Board to enter into negotiations. So can we limit the discussion at this time to that topic? Yes, sir.
Chad Sexton Duranian, 8 South Street, with respect to the Board of Selectmen and respect to the town administrator, and also in lieu of the fact that there have been some contracts in the past that have been poorly negotiated, I personally feel that we really need to be a little more comprehensive and collaborative in our efforts. I'm all for reducing the energy usage in the town, 100% for that, but to allow just the Board to make a decision like that without any input, without any public hearing, without any, any other organization within the town to vote on that is a little bit premature for us right now.
Mr. Moderator.
I wish to address one more time. Will you please limit your comments to this process? This is not a motion authorizing anything other than the Board to discuss. If you want to make a motion to change this motion to put in conditions, please do it now. Sir, you have the floor again.
I formally make a motion to set aside Article Number 8 until we can further discuss this in an open town, a public hearing.
Is your motion you'd wish to take no action at this time?
Correct.
Motion's been made and seconded to take no action. Ms. Kel.
Veronica Kel, 68 Meadow Road, I just, I want to consider that motion, but before I do, this question is actually for Town Council. Because at the January meeting, we considered, the January special town meeting, we considered pretty much this exact article, and it was modified to say, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen, we changed, enter into and to consider one or more net metering credit, blah, 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 and two, take any actions, and I'm trying to look at my things here, but you probably have this better than me, and consider any other documents, and to bring them forward at spring town meeting with all the details for consideration by town meeting at the spring 2020 annual town meeting. And I guess I, I am on Board of Selectmen now, and I was surprised to see that article without a contract. And from what I can tell, there was nothing really done on a contract between January and now. But yet we have this, again saying, and I believe we have the right to negotiate, we just don't have the right to enter into. And I am hesitant to enter into a 20-year agreement that buys all our electricity from one place when we do have the Green Communities document, which addresses solar, and for which the Energy Committee was formed. Granted, the Energy Committee has looked at all the other things, reducing the energy consumption in town, and they've done a good job with that, and from what I can tell, haven't met regularly since 2017. There's nothing on the website, I didn't do a public records request on that, but, and they are taking no position on this, because they weren't involved at all in negotiating this, but they do think solar is a good idea. So, and we can't get out of this in 20 years. The amount from the numbers I've seen, and I, I really haven't checked the calculations or anything like that to see where the numbers are from, but the numbers that I've seen mean that in 20 years, we will save the equivalent of what, pretty much, the equivalent of what we just approved for solid waste in the town, for our pickup of trash. I do think we should be looking at an overall picture, and the MVP grant that we just did this past spring during COVID time addresses the
Ms. Kel, at this point, we have your point.
Stop talking. My question is?
Your question has now been lost, you've had your comment.
Okay, well, my question is for Adam, I want to know if what I remember is correct?
I can answer that question, I moderated that meeting.
Okay.
There is a final action taken on that meeting that we're not reconsidering today.
Okay, so
This is a separate article.
Then I support passing this over.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
I'm going to go to the floor. There was other people. Yes, sir.
Lance McNally, 11 Shirley Road, I have one question on this warrant, that this article would allow the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement that would result in the town saving no less than 15% off its electric bills.
Sir, are you going to ask to take no action?
I will say, take no action.
Thank you. Any further comments, comments on take no action?
I just want to remind everybody, and I do remember this coming up, it is a hot topic, what you're asking, and I've watched the Selectmen meeting, is for them to negotiate a contract, but, and it's a 20-year contract, but any contract over three years still has to come to the floor for your approval. So, they can't, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I may be, they can't enter, Jim, a contract until it comes to the, until the contract is presented, correct?
Is that, you wish to take no action?
Well, I was trying to get the attention before we went to the no action.
So, all, we are letting him talk, right now, it's to take no action on this article. Please limit your comments to that.
I am in favor of no action on this article as, as it is written.
Take no action.
As it is written and presented, okay, says that they can enter into contracts, it doesn't say consider.
The motion is to take no action. Any further comments? All those in favor of taking no action on the motion on Article 8, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who wish to continue, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $27,500 for the purpose of funding the Assessor's Fiscal Year 21 Periodic Inspections and Property Data Verification Program as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, no, is that?
Yes, it's you.
It's me. Um, I moved at the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $27,500 for the purpose of funding the Assessor's Fiscal Year 21 Periodic Inspections and Property Data Verification Program as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments.
Motion's made and seconded on Article 9. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it unanimous. Article 10. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $55,000 to fund the second of three installments of the installment payment agreement executed by the Board of Selectmen and former police chief Richard Bailey, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Miller.
I move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $55,000 to fund the second of three installments of the installment payment agreement executed by the Board of Selectmen and a former police chief, Richard Bailey.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded on Article 10. Any discussion? Seeing none, appears we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, I guess we'll try that one more time. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Oh, boy. Um, I think that, that passes by, uh, by a majority.
That's it.
That is it. Is there any other motion? That's it. I think that's last article, and so we can entertain a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Miller.
I move that we adjourn and dissolve the annual town meeting at 11 o'clock on Saturday, July 27th, Saturday, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, to include the, the date of this meeting.
The days are all the same, come on.
All right, motion's made and seconded.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of dissolving the annual town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Meeting is dissolved.
Can I get a motion to adjourn our meeting? I was in favor. Thanks, guys.